Monday, September 22nd. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We would look for an adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean?
Given the minutes of the city council meeting held September 8, 2014, be adopted.
Thanks very much. Councillor McLean, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like it accurately reflects the meeting that was chaired, I believe, by Councillor Tarrant? Seeing nobody ringing in, looks like it went okay. And Councillor Tarrant, you're still alive? No scars, so it went all right. I'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll look for adoption of the agenda. As we look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, I would note that tonight is also the end of an era, as it is the end of the era of she who must be obeyed. My right-hand woman here tonight is our Community Growth Director, Jeanette Ferguson, and I understand tonight it's her last council meeting of her career. I just wanted to make note of that. I don't know if there's anything special for the agenda that council wanted to include in that. As our director's shaking her head, saying, "No, please, no." Who knows what they come up with? But I thought it was important at the outset of our meeting to recognize that, considering that City of Grand Prairie is Ferguson's only employer of her adult life. I thought it was important to recognize that at the outset of the meeting. Yeah. Councillor Thiessen, you have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Bill. I would move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Maybe we'll just deal with the second part of that motion. I believe we may have had an additional item. See from our Director of Community Living, two additional items. So we have Councillor Thiessen, the RCMP Strategic Plan and City Land Purchase. If that's correct. So we add them to the administration. Have a recommendation of what we would add those under? In reports? So I'll add them as 8.1 RCMP Strategic Plan and 8.2 Land Purchase. Councillor Thiessen, is that what your motion was? Was to adopt the agenda with those additions?
No, no. My motion was to give Jeannie a hug at the end of the council meeting. But yes, with those additions, I could move to adopt the agenda as presented and amend.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation for the agenda with those two additions? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. And that'll take us into the delegation portion of our agenda. This is a regular portion of our agenda that we have at every regular city council meeting where anybody in the community can come forward to address council on any matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. We may have some of those later on tonight. So is there anybody in the crowd that was here for just regular delegation business? Or are you all excited about our public hearings that are coming up? Yes, I'm seeing. Okay. So this is an opportunity that council has regularly, and if any member of the community would like to come forward and make use of it, we have it every two weeks. I'll move through delegations and close that portion of the agenda and move into public hearings. We'll start with item 6.1, the Westgate East Outline Plan Amendment and Land Use Bylaw Amendment for rezoning. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Walton, is that you?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce Bearstow, on behalf of the landowner, has submitted applications to amend the Westgate East Outline Plan and the Land Use Bylaw. The proposed amendments to the Outline Plan and the Land Use Bylaw would change the designations of the subject area from RC to RG for part of the site and from RG to RC for the other part of the site. The RG designation allows single and semi-tanish dwellings, and the RC allows multifamily units up to 12, multifamily development up to 12 units. The subject area is located within the remnant of the southwest corridor of section 27, township 71, range 6, which is in the, which again is the Westgate East area. The area has not yet been subdivided. It's still a remnant part of the parcel. The rezoning is the next step that the developer needs to do in order to actually subdivide the land. The area affected by the proposed amendments is north of 106th Avenue between 114 and 115th Street. The area to the north is undeveloped. The area to the south, there's multifamily proposed, and then beyond that, a stormwater management pond. The area to the west is designated for a future high-density residential site, and the area to the east is single-family residential development. The proposed amendment is consistent with the municipal development plan, which designates this area for low and medium residential. This is also consistent with the area structure plan, which also designates this for low and medium-density residential. The West, sorry, the Westgate East Outline Plan, actually, here we go. The Westgate East Outline Plan identifies this area for a combination of low-density residential and RC, which is a low-to-medium-density residential. What the applicant is proposing is, and I'm going to be switching drawings here a little bit, what the applicant is proposing is that the area in yellow, which is currently RC, would become RG, and the area that's orange is currently RG and would become RC. The area to the west, as I indicated, is RH. We believe that RC is a better transitional use than single-family. Aside from that, basically, we don't see any land use compatibility issues with the surrounding property owners, our surrounding properties. And we are recommending that council adopt the Westgate East Outline Plan Amendment and the Land Use Bylaw Amendment. There is one slight change that we want to address and have council adopt for amendment. As you can see here, right in the middle of the plan area, there's an area, I'm moving the mouse. Those two blocks, they are identified as RC. In fact, those are intended to go RG in the Outline Plan as well as the Land Use Bylaw. Like I said, we believe that the proposed amendments are reasonable and will not create any land use conflicts with surrounding property owners, and therefore, we're recommending the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Walton. Any questions for administration at this time from council? Don't see anybody ringing in. Then I would call if there are, for anybody that would like to speak in favor of the proposed change. Is there anybody here that would like to come forward to speak in favor of the proposed change? One group. Welcome. Please introduce yourselves. You're welcome.
I am Rayanne Leach, a project engineer with Firstelina's Sketch of Engineering, representing a developer.
And I'm Dan Long, also representing Bearstow. You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess we're just here, basically, to answer any questions. We've gone through this with the administrative staff and the planning department already, and as they noted, we feel that this is a good use of the land and an appropriate zoning change.
Anything to add, or were you just looking to take questions, if there are any, from council? Or was there any specific points you want to make?
I think we're just here if you guys have any additional questions beyond what's been presented.
Okay. So council, here's your opportunity to ask questions of the proponents, of his representatives. I don't see anybody ringing in, so it looks like it's a short time in the hot seat for both of you. Thanks for tonight, making yourselves available.
Thank you.
So again, this is an opportunity for anybody that would like to come forward to make a presentation in support of the proposed rezoning and amendments, associated amendments. I don't see anybody else coming forward in favor. Is anybody else that would like to come, is there anyone that would like to come forward to speak in opposition of the proposed changes? I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody that would like to come forward to speak in opposition to the proposed changes? I don't see anybody coming forward. So before I close the public hearing, one last opportunity for council if you have any questions of administration. And I don't see any council members ringing in or waving their hands. So I will close the public hearing, and we would move on to business arising. We do have some recommendations for motions. If I could get a motion on that business arising. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to move that council adopt by resolution amendments to the Westgate East Outline Plan by replacing the tables in Appendix A and Appendix B and the maps in Exhibits 7, 9, 14, 6, 15, and 16 with the tables and maps attached as amendments A, B, and C.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. And just for clarification to administration, you wanted us to do that as amended? Was there a specific one of those maps that you wanted us to do as amended? Because it is different than what's in our package.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it was map 14 that required the amendment.
So Exhibit 14 as amended? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, Councillor Clayton, you're okay with that? So it's actually, when you list those exhibits, it's actually Exhibit 14 as amended?
14 as amended, yep. As amended.
Okay. Any discussion or debate? Council? I see nobody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Really? You want me to do it all?
Some bylaw second.
I was moving on. I was moving on. That second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-17, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. So a motion for second reading to the Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
I would like to move that third reading be given to bylaw C 1260, or 1260-17, rather, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Seeing none, so I will call for the vote again. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that deals with the amendments to the Outline Plan and associated Land Use Bylaw Amendments required. So we move on to 6.2, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C 1260-18, rezoning from urban reserve to public service. I'd call this public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration.
So bylaw amendment C 1260-18 is a rezoning from urban reserve to public service. Wade Greentree is applying on behalf of the Catholic School Board. The site is located in the southeastern portion of the city and is adjacent to the Mother Teresa School Site. So the site is currently urban reserve, which essentially holds land to be rezoned after subdivision, and the use is meant to be complementary to the school site in order to accommodate a modular classroom. The neighboring uses are mostly residential, and so it is suitable to the context. Here we can see the actual uses in the area. So the land is currently a tree stand, and north of it is agricultural land, and it's next to more residential and country residential. So we see an image of the site adjacent to the school, and then more images of the context. Looking south, from the eastern portion of the site, you can see it's connected to a trail that leads to residential, so there are no conflicts with the current land uses. The site is located in the southeast area structure plan, and within that plan, the area is designated for future school sites. It indicates that it could potentially accommodate two school sites, but that isn't necessary. So it is suitable to the southeast area structure plan. We see the same thing in the Riverstone Outline Plan. The area is dedicated for a school site, and so this continues with that intent. As for the potential for a future school site, the Public School Board has been consulted and consent to this use. They're building a public school to the north of Riverstone, so it is not likely that they will need this site. But in the event that there is a requirement for another school on that site, the remaining area is 2.1 hectares, and so that should be able to accommodate another school. For instance, the current Mother Teresa site is 1.9, and Henry Belfer School is 2.937, so a school would fit on that site. So in summary, the rezoning complies with the current Land Use Bylaw, the relevant area structure plans, as well as the relevant Outline Plan. The use is complementary to adjacent land uses, and it will not diminish opportunities for schools in the area in the future. So administration recommends that this application be given second and third reading.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for administration? Councillor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick note, it's Harry Belfer School for another time. But I have two questions. One is that, as I understand, and thank you for the briefing, it's really a dual school site. Public School District is saying, at this point, we don't need it, but there probably would be room for another school if that really came to fruition. Yeah. Does that summarize the circumstance in terms of the availability of the site?
Yes, that's accurate.
And the second one is, have modulars been approved for that school to date? Or this is in anticipation of approval, or do you know?
I am not aware of whether or not the, we believe that they have been approved.
Thank you. Councillor Clayton?
Just a question for administration. Are you able to tell me if what I'm thinking is 76th Avenue will be punched through to connect to Willow Drive to have a second access to Mother Teresa School?
As far as I know, none of the roads will be modified.
Maybe you could go to the Outline Plan or either of the ones that show the sort of future, the future road network to the north of the site.
It shows it on the modified extract, right? But I guess my question is...
Oh, I see what you're referring to.
Do we know a timeframe at all? Like, just, I mean, it's going right through a subdivision right now. I don't know if you've ever gone to that school in the morning, but the traffic is a lot through that subdivision. So if there was options for that roadway, I was curious if it's going to happen sooner than later.
It's an understandable question. It's just engineering handles, those types of plans. So I'm not sure when the subdivision would be going through then.
Sir Mayor, I guess the subdivision for the school site is imminent. I think that they intend to actually approve that, I would, I believe tomorrow, quite frankly, if this is approved tonight. Bigger picture, the actual timeframe for development of the remainder of the neighborhood rests with the developer and his timeframe. Thank you.
And maybe this is related to Councillor Clayton's question. On the northwest of this, along 92nd Street, is that a plan that was recently approved by council? I seem to remember that there were some amendments to that plan, at least, that came forward to council. Sorry, if, go back to the map that has the yellow, the colored.
The modified extract.
One more. There we go. So that access off 92nd Street, the northwest 1871, 5, 6, that area, I believe, was the subject of a hearing, public hearing at council recently. So I think Councillor Clayton answered your question. I think development's going to proceed relatively quickly, but it isn't directly related to the site, to the school site. So am I correct, administration, in remembering that we didn't have some public hearing come forward for some portion of that land?
Sir Mayor, I mean, we have done amendments in the area. I'm not specifically recalling one directly, just to the north of this. Off the top of my head, I'm not recalling a specific amendment.
Councillor McLean?
Mayor Given, just a couple of questions. I don't know if we directed it with weights coming up or to administration. So the school is at full capacity now. How many modulars are bringing in? Just, the school isn't very old. It may be six years or seven years. It's not a very old school. Derek Taylor isn't either, and over half the students are in modulars. How many modulars are being planned to go in there?
My recollection is there's two modular classrooms being proposed. That's my recollection.
Room looks a lot bigger than just for two. Are they connected to the school?
I'm not aware of whether they're connected.
You're not knowing that either, eh? So they have to go outside, use the washroom?
Based on the layout of the current...
Question for the applicant.
Yeah, maybe.
Based on the layout of the current site, I don't believe they would be physically connected to the school.
But again, that may be a better question for the applicant's representation.
Okay.
So you can certainly ask that. Next part. Any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then I will call for anybody here to speak in support of this application.
Now we get to answer questions. Good deal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Wade Greentree, and I'm here on the behalf of Catholic School District to obviously help them with this rezoning and subdivision of their piece of land north of their site. As indicated before, they're at capacity and need some modulars, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, which I'm supposing are going to be coming right away.
So Councillor McLean is still first in my queue from...
I got a couple of questions. I wasn't sure which way to go. So you would know this, the school, how many students was it built for? Because they needed modulars, so there must be more in capacity.
Yeah. I'm not familiar with that. I think the number 550 or 600 rings a bell to me.
So they must be over that now?
Yeah.
Want modulars. Okay. Are they connected?
No, just a walkway up there.
Probably. That's a big issue in the community about connectivity with these modulars, 30, 40 below. And there's one other question I had was, thank goodness the city stepped up on this one and helped, stepped in front of the province, because there's actually two gyms in this school instead of one, like Derek Taylor. They got 900 students built for a 450 student school. So I mean, that's something the city should be proud of, but that was called planning. So anyways, I was just asking, because connectivity is huge. And so their spaces, how big is the space for how many modulars could they put in here?
Three acres. You could put a lot of modulars on that.
So it could end up being a Derek Taylor.
They hired me to do this. I am actually not involved in their construction, the site or anything, so...
So they're asking for two now, but, okay.
Any other questions for the delegation? Or, Mr. Greentree, did you want to make any sort of presentation?
Nope. Just going to answer questions.
Anyone else from council with questions for the presenter? I don't see anybody else ringing in, Mr. Greentree. The last delegation, your time in the hot seat is not too long. Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak in support of this application? We have a pretty limited gallery tonight, and I don't see anybody rushing forward. So is there anybody who would like to come? I'll move on to anybody who may wish to speak in opposition. Is there anybody who'd like to come forward to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody that would wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Council, one last chance, if you have any questions for administration. And I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll move, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. Councillor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-18, rezone UR to PS, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. So just quick speaking to this, we need the space for our students. May not be perfect, as Councillor McLean has intimated, in terms of connecting, et cetera. But I was pleased that Alex Guliswick is looking to do what they can to increase their capacity, and I'm pleased that both school districts were consulted, and so we have that information before us as we make this decision.
Thank you. Thanks, Councillor Adburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion for second reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion is carried. Councillor Adburn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move on, that I would move that third reading be given to bylaw C 1260-18, rezone UR to PS, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Adburn. So any one last opportunity? Any discussion or debate on this motion to rezone land to enable additional portable school? Councillor McLean?
Mayor Given, I'll be voting yes to this, but if it wasn't for two gyms, and I'm very wary about the connectivity of the school with the modulars, it's a big issue in our community. I'll still be voting yes, but the government hopefully will step up someday and realize we're not like Hamilton, the way they do their thinking of schools. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on third reading. Thank you. And that motion is carried. I believe that handles all of our public hearing business, and we had no items of unfinished business, so I think we are into our two added items. The first being the adoption of the RCMP, City of Grand Prairie RCMP Strategic Plan. Council had seen this at a previous council committee of the whole meeting. It was recommended forward by Council Committee of the Whole to council for approval and adoption. I don't know that we need an introduction for administration, unless we just really wanted to put the acting Community Safety Director in the hot seat. But I would, so I would look for, I would look for a motion from council to get this on the table, and then we can discuss and debate. So somebody care to make a motion that council adopt the City of Grand Prairie RCMP Strategic Plan as presented? Councillor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I'd like to make that motion that we adopt the City of Grand Prairie RCMP Strategic Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Discussion, debate? We'll make a comment. This is the first time in my time on council that the RCMP detachment, independent of what happens at the district or division level in RCMP, this is the first time in my experience that the detachment has come forward with their own review of strategic priorities and recommendations for council. So I want to commend the officer in charge, Ray Noble, for his work in this and leading this. I think it's an important piece of work. I think it has a broad set of recommendations that will improve the City of Grand Prairie's ability to respond to the needs of the community in a number of ways. First and foremost, that will inform business planning as we go into a budget cycle, but also gives us a number of active items that we can advocate for on behalf of the RCMP for different improvements to the way we provide service to our residents. So I just want to recognize Inspector Noble, Superintendent Noble, for his work. I don't know if anybody else had any other comments? Any plan? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to see what you're saying, Superintendent Ray Noble's done a very, very good job since he's taken over three years ago, taking helm of the leadership. And as we know, the RCMP just don't work within our boundaries. They're in the county an awful lot, so hopefully, a lot of people will read this up and will look at it quite closely in budget.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, I do want to make a comment. The relationship that the RCMP and the city have, the people that represent the city and the people that represent the RCMP have had a very close relationship and open, and at no time I feel that we are being shunned. It's always an open-door policy. When we need to discuss things, we're welcomed, and I just want to pass that on.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue for a discussion or debate on this motion to adopt the RCMP Strategic Plan. So I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that third reading be given to bylaw C 1260-18, rezone UR to PS, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. And just for clarification to administration, you wanted us to do that as amended? Was there a specific one of those maps that you wanted us to do as amended? Because it is different than what's in our package.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it was map 14 that required the amendment.
So Exhibit 14 as amended? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, Councillor Clayton, you're okay with that? So it's actually, when you list those exhibits, it's actually Exhibit 14 as amended?
14 as amended, yep. As amended.
Okay. Any discussion or debate? Council? I see nobody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Really? You want me to do it all?
Some bylaw second.
I was moving on. That second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-17, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. So a motion for second reading to the Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
Really? You want me to do it all?
Some bylaw second.
I was moving on. That second reading be given to bylaw C 1260-17, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Any discussion or debate on third reading of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment?
Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that takes us on to our other additional item, item 8.2, City Land Purchase. And on this one, I would look for an introduction from administration from our Community Living Director, Mr. Roth. Gary?
Thank you, Your Worship. Administration has been working or looking for land to provide future opportunities for both seniors and family social housing within the city. Having land available for these types of projects puts the city and our partners in a better position to secure provincial funding. Administration has identified a parcel of land in the Smith subdivision as a potential location. It's located between Park Road and 93rd Street and south of the Rotary Soccer Fields. It's 11.8 acres. It's 11.8 acres.
I mean, we have, we have done amendments in the area. I'm not specifically recalling one directly, just to the north of this. Off the top of my head, I'm not recalling a specific amendment.
Counselor McLean?
Just a couple of questions. I don't know if we directed it with Wade's coming up or to administration. So the school is at full capacity now. How many modulars are bringing in? Just, the school isn't very old. It may be six years or seven years. It's not very old school. Derek Taylor isn't either, and over half the students are in modulars. How many modulars are being planned to go in there?
My recollection is that there's two modular classrooms being proposed. That's my recollection.
Room looks a lot bigger than just for two. Are they connected to the school?
I'm not aware of whether they're connected.
You're not knowing that either, eh? So they have to go outside, use the washroom?
Based on the layout of the current-
Yeah, maybe.
Based on the layout of the current site, I don't believe they would be physically connected to the school.
Seeing none, then I will call forward anybody here to speak in support of this application.
Now we get to answer questions. Good deal. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Wade Green Tree, and I'm here on the behalf of Catholic School District to obviously help them with this rezoning and subdivision of their piece of land north of their site. As indicated before, they're at capacity and need some modulars. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, which I'm supposing are going to be coming right away.
So Counselor McLean is still first in my queue.
I got a couple of questions. I wasn't sure which way you directed. So you would know this, the school, how many students was it built for? Because they needed modulars, so there must be more incapac-
Yeah. I'm not familiar with that. I think the number five hundred and fifty or six hundred rings a bell to me.
So they must be over that now, want modulars. Okay, are they connected?
No, just a walkway up there.
Probably. That's a big issue in the community about connectivity with these modulars, thirty, forty below. And there's one other question I had was, thank goodness the city stepped up on this one and helped, stepped in front of the province, because there's actually two gyms in this school instead of one, like Derek Taylor. They got nine hundred students built for a four hundred student school. So, I mean, that's something the city should be proud of, but that was called planning. So anyways, I was just asking because connectivity is huge. And so their spaces, how big is the space for how many modulars could they put in here?
Three acres. Put a lot of modulars on that.
So it could end up being a Derek Taylor-
They hired me to do this. I am actually not involved in their construction, the site or anything, so.
So they're asking for two now, but, okay.
Any other questions for the delegation? Or, Mr. Green Tree, did you want to make any sort of presentation?
Nope, just, just gonna answer questions.
Anyone else from council with questions for the presenter? I don't see anybody else ringing in, Mr. Green Tree. The last delegation, your time in the hot seat is not too long. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward to speak in support of this application? We have a pretty limited gallery tonight, and I don't see anybody rushing forward. So is there anybody who would like to come? I'll move on to anybody who may wish to speak in opposition. Is there anybody who'd like to come forward to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody that would wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Again, I don't see anybody coming forward. Council, one last chance. If you have any questions for administration? And I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll move, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move the second reading be given to bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighteen, rezon U R two P S, being an amendment to the land use bylaw. So just quick speaking to this, we need the space for our students. May not be perfect as Counselor McLean has intimated in terms of connecting, et cetera. But I was pleased that Alex Gulisik is looking to do what they can to increase their capacity. And I'm pleased that both school districts were consulted, and so we have that information before us as we make this decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion for second reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. That motion is carried. Counselor Radburn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move on. That I would move that third reading be given to bylaw C twelve sixty dash eighteen, rezon U R two P S, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So, one last opportunity, any discussion or debate on this motion to rezone land to enable additional portable state school? Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I'll be voting yes to this, but if it wasn't for two gyms, and I'm very wary about the connectivity of the school with the modulars. It's a big issue in our community. I'll still be voting yes, but the government hopefully will step up someday and realize we're not like Hamilton, the way they do their thinking of schools. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then I will call for the vote on third reading. Thank you. That motion is carried. I believe that handles all of our public hearing business. And we had no items of unfinished business, so I think we are into our two added items. The first being the adoption of the R C M, City of Grand Prairie R C M P strategic plan. Council had seen this at a previous council committee of the whole meeting. It was recommended forward by council committee of the whole to council for approval and adoption. I don't know that we need an introduction for administration, unless we just really wanted to put the acting community safety director in the hot seat. But I would, so I would look for, I would look for a motion from council to get this on the table, and then we can discuss and debate. So somebody care to make a motion that council adopt the City of Grand Prairie R C M P strategic plan as presented? Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I'd like to make that motion that we adopt the City of Grand Prairie R C M P strategic plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Discussion, debate? I will make a comment. This is the first time in my time on council that the R C M P detachment, independent of what happens at the district or division level in R C M P, this is the first time in my experience that the detachment has come forward with their own review of strategic priorities and recommendations for council. So I want to commend the officer in charge, Ray Noble, for his work in this and leading this. I think it's an important piece of work. I think it has a broad set of recommendations that will improve the City of Grand Prairie's ability to respond to the needs of the community in a number of ways. First and foremost, that will inform business planning as we go into a budget cycle, but also gives us a number of active items that we can advocate for on behalf of the R C M P for different improvements to the way we provide service to our residents. So I just want to recognize Inspector Noble, Superintendent Noble, for his work. I don't know if anybody else had any other comments in plan? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just conceded what you're saying, Superintendent Ray Noble's done a very, very good job since he's taken over three years ago, taking helm of the leadership. And as we know, R C M P just don't work within our boundaries. They're in the county an awful lot, so hopefully a lot of people will read this up and will look at it quite closely in budget.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, I do want to make a comment. The relationship that the R C M P and the city have, the people that represent the city and the people that represent the R C M P have had a very close relationship and open. And at no time I feel that we are being shunned. It's always an open door policy. When we need to discuss things, we're welcomed. And I just want to pass that on.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue for a discussion or debate on this motion to adopt the R C M P strategic plan, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. And that takes us on to our other additional item, item eight point two, city land purchase. And on this one, I would look for an introduction for administration from our community living director, Mr. Roth. Gary?
Thank you, Your Worship. Administration has been working or looking for land to provide future opportunities for both seniors and family social housing within the city. Having land available for these types of projects puts the city and our partners in a better position to secure provincial funding. Administration has identified a parcel of land in the Smith subdivision as a, as a potential location. It's located between Park Road and Ninety Third Street and south of the Rotary Soccer Fields. It's eleven point eight, eleven point eight acres in size, with all utilities and services nearby. Administration has worked through an agent to negotiate a purchase price and has entered into a conditional agreement to purchase the land for two point four million, which is below the appraised value of two point six five million for that site. Administration proposes that the purchase be funded through the sale of other city-owned lands and using an interim solution of financing through our own internal reserves in the meantime until those sales can be completed. So is our recommendation for the purchase that council approve the purchase of that land?
Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. So an opportunity for questions for administration. And if we get outside of questions, then I'd look for a motion to get this on the table so we can have discussion and debate. So first, I suppose we can either start with questions or if there's a motion to come forward. Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I just have a question for Mr. Gary. Gary, if we have this ownership of land, then that starts the ball rolling with provincial government for senior housing and different initiatives that we might plan. We don't have the land. Will they speak? Talk to us?
Mr. Roth?
It is our understanding that the provincial government typically funds projects that are shovel-ready, so to speak. And so this is the first step to be in a, in a good position to be able to move forward with any future funding opportunities.
Counselor Clayton?
If there's no further questions, I'd be prepared to make a motion. I'd like to move that the city purchased land located at plan nine eight two five two one nine, lot one, in the Smith subdivision in the City of Grand Prairie, for the amount of two million four hundred thousand dollars excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So that is obviously open for discussion and debate. Discussion and debate on that motion? Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting this motion. I think that this land purchase will be great for the city. We've looked for, you know, we've, we've had troubles in the past identifying areas for social housing, seniors housing, and we just, the city doesn't have any greenfield development space that's available to us. And so I think this is, you know, very timely, and this is going to help us with those priorities. It's also, I also appreciate the fact that we are funding this through the sale of other social housing units, so that, you know, it's not going to be a cost, you know, a great cost to the taxpayers. And we're going to be able to, be able to use this land to greater value than the previous social housing units were.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Given, just question administration, Gary. The timeframe of selling other properties and that, we'd be looking at in six months to a year. It'd be, if this goes through, it'd be go pretty quick to try to recoup some of the money buying this land?
Mr. Roth?
There will be a report coming forward to council through committee at a future point in time. There are some pending subdivision, other things, factors in, that have to come in to fruition first. And then a report will come forward to council outlining the next steps in terms of land sale.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate? I'll just take the opportunity to voice my support for this. I certainly am in favor, knowing the challenge that it's been. And I know Counselor Radburn has been advocating that the City of Grand Prairie support the Grand Spirit Foundation by identifying an appropriate parcel of land, I think since your first term on council, Counselor Radburn. And to date, we haven't been able to successfully do that. So I also recognize that the city's ability to be able to support Habitat for Humanity has been a challenge at different times because we haven't been able to identify sites. My understanding is that this site is large enough to accommodate a range of different uses that could do anything from seniors housing to other affordable housing to even market RE housing. And so I think that that site provides the city with the flexibility that we're going to need to be able to address the needs that are obviously coming forward. So I certainly appreciate the flexibility that we'll have to address these needs. That's why I'll be voting in support. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. That motion is carried. I believe that handled our two additional report items that were added and would take us into committee business. And we start with item nine point one, the Community Growth Committee meeting from September ninth. Look for a motion to adopt those minutes from the chair.
Mayor Given?
Counselor O'Toole, thank you.
I move that council receive the minutes from the Community Growth Committee held on September ninth, twenty fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we accurately reflected the meeting that happened? Looks like it must, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, I just have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. We had two delegations. It Miss Cheryl Weaver, Chairman of the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, and she gave a presentation on, which was the former Take Part, Take Pride Committee, and outlining some of the plans and goals for the twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen and objectives for this committee. We also had a gentleman from Bud Country Fever. He's the event manager, and he addressed some committee regarding, regarding our city policy in handling ticket sales. And we forward that on to administration to work with him to come up with possibly a better plan in the future that would benefit both the city and the longstanding event, Bud Country Fever.
Is that everything, Counselor?
That's everything, sir.
Thank you. I will move to nine point two, the Community Living Committee from September ninth. Counselor Radburn, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held September ninth.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, then we must have everything in order, and I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I have three, three items of business from that meeting to share. First of all, we had a presentation from a representative of the Skate Park Association. So we received that for information, and we directed men to work with this Skate Park Association representative to determine financial requests for this next budget cycle and bring that back to committee. So we had some ideas in terms of what they're looking at, and now we're looking at some costing. It will come back to committee before we decide to refer it to budget or not. Secondly was, we received the Jubilee Park Enhancement Plan. It was presented by administration with total costs, and this is something we've been on our items, on selling items list for a bit, and it was certainly welcomed, and it was a good report. However, committee directed administration to bring back the report with a phasing in of these costs over the, over the budget, four-year budget cycle we're going to enter into. So again, committee will have an opportunity to look at that and decide what to refer on to budget. And finally, we received correspondence from the Grand Prairie District Golden Age Center withdrawing their request for a new facility. That was good to formalize that. There are a number of asks and needs in the community. This was one that was a little different in terms of deciding that they were going to make the best use of what the facility they now have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. We'll move on to the Community Safety Committee meeting from September sixteen. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held September sixteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. To speak to a couple on the group funding applications. We had a few that come in. They've been reported in paper and on the news. One was search and rescue, and we've had a few that are coming to budget. So very good to hear them come forward and ask before budget. And some are more, and some are close to saying what they were. And we had some streeting issues for parking. West Point, you might have heard of a few of them. So we'll see how that evolves over time. And the one I'd like to say is the other business was brought up by Counselor Radburn was for congestion on sixty eighth. And administration is looking at that. It is looking down the road for another bridge and, you know, four lanes. That's all in the process, but it's just about getting that message out there. And so I was glad that Counselor Radburn brought that.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So we move on to nine point four, the Corporate Services Committee meeting. And Counselor Tarrant, can you handle that set of minutes for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move that the September sixteenth Corporate Services Committee meeting minutes be approved.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Don't see any, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant, I think you had one piece of business coming out?
Yes, we had one thing in the meeting. So we were presented with the whistleblower policy. So I will move that council approve the whistleblower protection policy as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on that policy? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I'm just going to speak in favor of the idea of the policy, but I don't believe I'll be voting for it today. I do think there are some things that need to be fleshed out, and some definitions need to be given. Currently under our whistleblower policy, the sole directive in, in charge of making sure that any wrongdoings are righted is our city manager, but we don't have a defined designate in case, let's say, in the future, perhaps our city manager is the one that is crossing those lines and boundaries and going over the procedures and the policy. I didn't see anything in there. So just in protection of the city and its future, I would be more inclined to add a definition before, before I'd approve a policy such as this.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Other discussion or debate? Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Perhaps administration can maybe address some of Counselor Thiessen's concerns in terms of designate and what, how that's referred to in other bylaws?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, when the city manager is not acting, he does designate a person. That person is a director in place of the city manager. So if there were an issue with the city manager, the next level would be to address it with council.
Mr. Anderson, it's also my understanding that council approves policies, but we don't necessarily approve procedures. There was some discussion about the procedure that would go along with this policy. And from my recollection at the committee meeting, it was intended in that procedure that the city manager would identify a board, for lack of a better word, or a collective of these types of allegations. Correct?
That is correct. There would be the convening of a board to assess the merit of the, the complaint and investigate it as well. So it's not left to the city manager to do the sole investigation. It's left to a board, essentially.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. So Counselor Thiessen, I think to your, your concern, I think the procedure, again, council doesn't approve procedures, this is generally say we approve a policy, and that's up to them to figure out how to implement that policy. The procedure that is intended to go along with this would envision a cross-departmental body with a number of people reviewing any submission that was made. I think that would probably, that should apply in the case of the city manager as well. My understanding is, and again, I could be corrected on this by administration, I believe that we discharge our city manager with acting pretty much every policy that's approved by council.
That is correct. Every policy makes reference to a designate in case the city manager is unavailable or incapacitated.
So certainly appreciate the perspective and understand, considering that the procedure isn't here, that is not a hundred percent clear. And that was one of the questions that came up at the committee. And I believe administration emailed out the procedure to council members following. Might have clarified it a little bit, but again, the procedure here, it's up to administration to implement. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. With one opposed, Counselor Tarrant, is there anything else that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
There is no other items of business on that. The only item.
Okay. Thanks very much, and thanks for handling that set of minutes and that piece of business. We'll move on. We had no items of correspondence. We had no delegations. I don't believe we have any notices of motion, and so we moved to council member reports. Counselor Thiessen, I believe you had the intercity forum on social policy and then the library boards. If you want to start with the intercity forum and move on to library boards?
Sure, let's do it. I got to be honest, it was a little bit terrifying getting on a airplane on nine eleven to fly out to Calgary to go to this meeting, but it was an excellent meeting, to say the least. So with the intercity forum on social policy on September twelfth, at that meeting, we discussed several topics, including increasing F C S S funding to all municipalities, as those rates, as we're all aware, have not been going up since two thousand and nine. We also discussed a definition around affordable housing. And it, going around the table, you could see that each municipality had their own definition on what qualified as, as affordable housing and, and the rates. So some, some municipalities had said, well, it's based on income, whereas other municipalities said, well, it's based on the market. And that's pretty much the province's line on affordable housing. It's based on any given market where you're at. So we're looking for a clear definition of that, of affordable housing, and we're moving forward to address that with the province in future talks. Speaking of the province, we did have a presentation by members of the province to speak on F C S S funding, among other topics. So they came in, they presented their framework for social policy. They've done this before in the past coming here as they were fleshing out their ideas, but they had a little more scope and a little more of a plan and everything put together. So they were showing us how it would be enacted and funded. And currently, they said they are looking into increasing F C S S funding, but of course, they're waiting for our minister to be appointed, and we lost our minister for that, that same day. So I'm sure at our next meeting, they will come back. And the province actually suggested to the committee that it might be beneficial for them to have representation sitting on that board, or at least to be in constant contact with the intercity forum on social policy, to which the committee thought was, was a great idea. So we're drafting a letter to request that either a member of the province's administration or the new minister would come in and sit on our quarterly meetings, wherever they may be in the province. Another means of action that we took is we were gathering info on transit policies and how many cities have special or lower fare policies. And we're going to present that sort of poll that we're going to do with the cities to see where we are comparable and then bring that forward to the province as well. So it was a very productive meeting, especially with the province and especially with our municipality leaders. And yeah, I was happy to be there.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Do you want to speak about the library board?
Sure. It was a busy, busy week for the library, actually. Of course, right after council meeting the next day, I was at a library board meeting, and we discussed the library's seventy-fifth anniversary and how well it went. Memberships and attendance and programs were all up at the library. I think our memberships grew by a thousand in comparison to our average of last year in the month, partially due to the free membership promotion that we did to celebrate the seventy-fifth anniversary. And for the most part, that was, that was all the updates that we had at our library board meeting, because we were entering into a plan of service, which we did with Miriam Mannick from the province of Alberta. And there, we spent two and a half days of planning how the library is going to address the next five years of how they achieve their service and what areas of service that we really want to focus on. And that will be ratified at our next board meeting. But the decisions that we came upon, three ones that we thought were most important to the library and its clientele, was to promote further lifelong learning from age zero to ninety, maybe a hundred, if you're living that long. Youth literacy was another one, and connecting the community to city events, provincial affairs, and other things as well. So we felt really confident about it, and it sort of reflected our community consultations as well as the ideas of the board. So we're quite happy to get that through and have that ratified for our next meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Were there any reports, were there any other reports from external agencies, boards, and commissions? Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have two to report. The first one is the Wapiti Corridor. We met again, and we invited some residents from Grovedale who had concerns with the plan, and we welcomed a number of them to the board. And discussion at the meeting was surrounding what, what should be done with the plan. There was a significant list of concerns that Grovedale residents had, and the M D of Greenview is compiling a list of concerns with the plan for us to address. But there was a strong sentiment from the committee to have at least the plan that north of the river have those components submitted to the government so that the county can start working on a number of initiatives of there, and that, that process is not held up. So we're going to be making this decision at the next meeting, but it looks like going forward that, that will be the case. There would be, if we relook at redoing the plan to the south of the river, there's going to be significant financial implications, which, you know, from, you know, it would be a discussion we would have to have, whether we would want to be involved. We've already committed seventy-five thousand dollars- We've already committed $75,000 over the last several years. And so it didn't seem from the county's position, and certainly from my position, that we would be, there would be an appetite to open that up again. So we're looking at maybe splitting the plan in two and letting the MD handle it from that. It's a little update there. Also with Special Olympics, the planning is going very well. I was made charge of the food planning, so making sure the 850 athletes and coaches that will be here are fed over the course of the weekend. And also, I'm sure most of you have heard the news, but we, Grand Prairie is now the, has the world's record for the world's largest truck convoy. So I want to say congratulations to Shirley Norton and her entire team. And for everyone that planned that, over $140,000 was raised, which was also another record. And so kudos to them, and we're looking forward to a great event then.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just had a couple of reports from the Grand Prairie Sport Council. I wanted to report that to let everybody know to save the date of November 29th as Try It Day. It'll be a new initiative from the sport council that will invite people to come out and try different sports from the ages of six to 12. So it's a celebration of sports day in Canada, but it's also a day to try different sporting activities. People will be encouraged to sign up and register their children. It'll take place between 10 and 3 on that day. And there will be more information on that coming forward as well. I wanted to talk about an initiative that we had a delegation present to us at sport council that day in regards to the Playing to Win program from the Alberta Council Women's Shelters. It's being rolled out in the fall with, by the city of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Area Family Violence Prevention Network, Odyssey House and Pace. And this program is working partnership with the Breakfast with the Boys program to promote healthy masculinity and equip community members to address the attitudes and behaviors that lead to violence towards men, women, boys, and girls. So it's a great program, and I know there'll be more information going forward on that. It was nice to get some information at sport council regarding that. I had one other report in regards to Nighthawk. Just a reminder that on October 4th, the 18th Annual Nighthawk fundraiser, the Comedy Night, will take place at Five Mile Hall, and there are still a few tickets left.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole, have you had a report as well?
Yes, Mayor Given, I got an armful. Centre 2000 Board Meeting, we held just a couple of weeks ago. Some of the things that we did this year, we had a year of maintenance. The building was painted. The roof will be, the shingles will be getting replaced, and that should be completed by October 15th. Some of the paving stones around the building were readjusted, so they're a lot smoother. And we're in negotiations right now about getting the rug replaced in the building. Rental space has been very busy, so if you wanted to come in and rent a room, you may have to wait in line. And also, all the space that we have available to be leased is completely leased out. So the building is a very busy building. And so at that point in time, I'll just move on to the NCDC, what's kind of been put into dissolved scenario right now. Federal funding has been lacking. Federal or provincial funding from BC has been not up to par that we had thought, and it's been actually reduced. Membership in the BC side of the NCDC has fallen. So we're sitting in a bit of a limbo right now, and I'm thinking that there may be another outcome in the near future. That's discussions are being held right now with that. As far as the DTS, we just had a board meeting here just the other day as well. And we're going through our plans, looking at staffing, training, and stuff like that. So it's kind of an update and financials, but we're looking good there. And also, the River of Death and Discovery, just wanted to let everybody know that the original board that was placed in there a few years ago has dissolved. And we had a new board, and it wasn't a bad thing. It's actually a good thing. It was heavily occupied by county influence, and that kind of left a possible, not a regional, atmosphere, as we are always promoting. And so we changed the board, and there's a number of new people and not so heavily dominated. I can just give you a rundown of the people that are on the executives, sir. Ross Southern is still staying on his chair. I was voted as the secretary. Bob Hall is the vice chair. Sheldon Graber, a past member as well. Chris Turmeyer, Peter Harris, Tim Balvey, he's a lawyer in town here. Loretta Leavies, an accountant with MMP. Tyler Keddie, another accountant. Gary Hessler, he's a service bank. Paul Pin, he's a businessman, chef in the past. Tim Powell, a name that I'm sure most people recognize. And the executive director is George Jacob, as I mentioned last meeting. He will be the CEO and the president. And that would be my report, sir.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Looking forward to the evolution of the dinosaur museum?
Yes.
Thanks. Were there any other external reports? Nope. Seeing none, then we'll start off at council roundtable, and Counselor Radburn, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. September 10th, I represented council along with Connie Representative and Chamber Representative and Alberta Health Representatives at a reception for medical students who are doing some practicum experiential job shadowing kind of work in the community. Just really enjoyed the conversation. Part of the reason for the reception is to put our best foot forward in terms of hopefully these students will choose when they're finished to come to our area and practice. So they were finding the experiences very, very useful. And of note to council in particular, two of the, I think there were six or seven, two of them mentioned and gave, and gave me thanks on behalf of the group for their East Link passes. So it's something that council decided a while back, something that we can do while they're here. And it's being well received. And one of them is actually is a surf rider, so he's, he's doing, he said if he shows up at the hospital, it's probably because of his surf riding. But anyway, I'm sure he's quite capable. September 11th, GPRTA meeting, and our annual meeting is November 19th. And that afternoon, we had a city-county Greenview information meeting. 14th, I brought greetings on behalf of council at the Terry Fox Run up at Crystal Lake. Again, a great reminder of the extensiveness of our Muscat C P Park. And there are several jewels along the way. Our New North section, I'm sure will be a jewel as well, but just a reminder of the beauty and how all the park is used to communities' advantage and for everyone. 17th, we had a meeting at the Sex Pacific Center with city-county, Sex Smith Beaver Lodge, Wembley Heights Information Session. 18th, went to the United Way kickoff. Just want to recognize our staff, I guess all of us, as a significant contributor to the United Way program, as they shared some data there. That afternoon, I went to the Wild Rose Villas Awards Tea and brought greetings. And then in the evening, joined Counselor Tarrant at the Community Social Development Homeless Initiative Annual Celebration Consultation. September 19th, I blew myself, no, the wind blew me, to 108th Street and 60th Avenue, where we, we had a ribbon cutting for a trail that opened. And apparently, it's being used by the community and by students already. So it was great news. And finally, on the 21st, I went to the Labor Council BBQ for the underemployed at Muscat C P Park and was able to recognize Randy Wald, one of our, president of our local city unions working with the city, for his contributions to make that happen. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Tarrant?
Mayor Given, a couple of highlights. On the 13th, I attended Pace fundraiser. It was great to see a lot of community support out there, supporting a very vital organization in our, in our city. On the 17th and on the 19th, we had a couple of meetings with several municipalities in the, in the area. And it was, I think it was a very productive meetings. It was good information sharing. It was good to have informal chats with other representatives from the area. That was, that was great. And we had, oh, on the 19th, I attended, the county had an open house for the showing off their new buildings. And so it was great to get, get some lunch out from them and, and, you know, again, chat with some members of their council.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of quick things. I also attended the Joint City-County MD meeting. It was very informative and nice to have everybody all in the room at once as well. I attended the Terry Fox Run, and thank you to Counselor Radburn for bringing greetings. And I was happy to say my five-year-old beat me, but that's okay. It was a great event, and it was well-attended, and I understand that they raised a lot of money again this year. I also had the opportunity to attend the United Way Campaign Kickoff, which was, you know, roomful of really appreciative people, so that was nice to be part of that. As well, I attended two other events. One is a new event in Grand Prairie called Young at Art, put on by a local photographer who raised money in conjunction with a community foundation to start up some funds to support youth for, in creative arts. So there's some nice dollars being raised there and going forward some programs that will help some youth in need. And as well, I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to spend a short time at a celebration of a local businessperson. It was a Lee Sheet Medal 50th Anniversary Celebration on Friday. So big congratulations to everyone involved with that. It was very well put together and very well, a great, happy event. The whole entire family was very proud of what was going on. So congratulations to them, and that's it. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Start off, well, I attended a LARB meeting, which is a local assessment review board. Took up part of my day on the Friday. Also attended the parks naming criteria for the next 25 names that we're going to put on, on the city, giving that out in the next couple of weeks. I attended the Walk Run Club, also worked with the AIDS Walk at Muscat C P Park. I handed out the medals. So I could say I actually attended a marathon, but I didn't run it. So, but I handed out 250 medals, and, and I'm really actually quite proud that the city and other businesses have encouraged their employees to get healthier. And as they go through their work, they're encouraged. And there's an opportunity there that the businesses, I just want to make Conoco Phillips, they had like over 35 employees running that. And the city of Grand Prairie, I think, had 16 or maybe possibly more. There's an 11-year-old girl that she competed in that. She was the, the, coming in second place in the 10-kilometer run. And there was a lot of, like I said, 250 people. Just another comment, intermunicipability, intermunicipal supper discussion was talked about already. And once again, I want to bring up the fact that I went to the Lee's Sheet Medal, LSM, 50 years. I know Lee and Audrey Merlow for probably all of those 50 years. And it's one thing to celebrate 50 years and being in business, but to meet the original owner and be the original owner and have their family, and then go to a third phase where they've actually got people that have bought in, past employees. It's pretty exciting, and it was a pretty lively event. Lots of good spirit going on there. So congratulations to Lee Sheet Medal.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Thiessen?
You really want to hear everything that I did while you were on vacation for a week, Bill?
Certainly, at least start from the last council meeting, yep.
I got some, I got some things highlighted here.
Council-related activities.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Well, I could talk all night if I wasn't talking council-related activities.
You're not.
But I started my reign of terror as deputy mayor for Bill Given a week before our last council meeting, and it just continued on through. So I was, attended 30 different events and meetings for the two weeks, so it's quite busy. Kudos to Wayne, I'm starting under, or to Bill and Wayne and Dwight and all our former mayors for how busy they are. And our current mayor, of course, Bill. But yeah, I was scrambling. I don't know what happened. I'm too busy looking at my phone to see what I can highlight and take off the list. There's some really cool things that happened, actually. On September the 9th, I was, I did the proclamation reading for FASD Awareness Day, and we did that at the Montrose Cultural Center down in Teresa Sergeant Hall. So that was really good to be a part of it, my first ever proclamation reading, in fact. Then, yeah, I was flying around the province for our intercity forum and doing library meetings. I was also able to attend and bring greetings at the Go 21, raising awareness for Down Syndrome event, which is great. I was, I guess, the third walk out of four weekends that I participated in our drool of the city in Muscat C P Park, which I topped off last weekend with another walk for the Age Walk around Muscat C P Park. Also took part in the parks naming with Kevin and Helen. I was also at the United Way Campaign. Sorry, guys, I'm skimming here now. You know, I even went to a really cool event with my son. I was able to take him to, out in Wembley as a representative of counselor. It was the Ronald McDonald Hoedown for the House. And it was a pretty unique event because it's not often that you go to an event with a silent auction and dinner served and everything like that, and you walk in the door and there's 300 kids running around. Like, it was really cool. They had set up Ronald McDonald boxes with crayons, and all the tables are done out with construction papers, so the kids could draw right on the tables. It was really good. In the hockey arena there, they had like a nice bouncy castle and stuff. It was very kid-friendly and family-friendly, and you just don't see enough of that. And I'm proud to say that not only was I able to speak on behalf of council and grow, I guess, in my relationships with the county and with our MLA Wayne Drysdale, because we all had a good night that night, but the organization set a goal for $40,000, and they hit it that night. So that was really good through their silent auction and ticket sales. So I was very proud to be a part of that and be able to bring my son to that. Also, I don't know if I should tell you guys this, maybe to take the words from my co-counselor Helen Rice. She doesn't know if she should be proud or terrified. But on Wednesday of this past week, I was, I received a phone call from the province informing me that I had just been appointed to the IAC Interagency Council on Homelessness for AUMAs. So I was pretty proud to be able to do that, and that was part of the discussion at the ICFSP. That's a mouthful of letters. But yeah, I was happy to be able to send them forward that and say, hey, now I'm talking for everybody here. So first meeting comes in December. And on that behalf, I'm also the first ever representative of the Peace Region on this council. So hopefully, we can do a lot of good with my voice there. And yeah, I did lots, but I'm going to cut it off right there with the highlight.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen, and thanks for stepping in as deputy mayor. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll speak to three I have attended besides the other council committee, the whole meetings and other things we've done, staff. I opened up, helped open up some tenders on September 12th, and I actually got excited on tender opening. I hoped they said he's going to save money and do good. We had one for salt, one bid. So I think you know where that's going. That wasn't too exciting. Then we had another bid for sand that they mixed with the salt, one bid. So anyways, so then I got, there was another bid. And I was like, oh, good on the pace building heat system. There was two bids. And I always think, geez, it'd be $10, $100 together, just that'd be compatible. This one was not as close. So one was really good price, one wasn't. But I mean, that's, for the tender basis, it's important for the city to save money. I mean, if they get lots of bids, there's a chance we could save on jobs being done, and the one was quite a bit of dollars. As well, on September 17th, I left for St. Albert, City-St. Albert. On 18th, there was a Smart City Symposium. It was held at the Enjoy Center, and I thought, geez, I've gone to St. Albert a lot of times. What's the Enjoy Center? That's actually the new Hole Center, Lewis Hole and their family, Jim Hole and them for the flowers. They built a big, beautiful place out there, so I got lucky to go in there. And there was a lot of talk and data and connecting it and how cities and towns could save money in the future. And there was a lot of talk and data and connecting it and how cities and towns could save money in the future and bring it all together. And you can just look at an East Link Center and how much more money we spend on that for power and emissions from it and what we could do differently. They talked about a lot of stuff, like how many apps are made every day, 2,500. They went on and on, and how much data is going to have everybody on their smartphones. And, but it was really good because there's actually cost savings. If you look in the city, a lot of city residents think, oh, am I going to get a ticket at that light? And every light has a camera, but it's not meant for giving tickets at every light. It's meant for moving the pace of the vehicles and see how things are adjusting. So, but we got to collect that data and make it work well. And are we at that potential yet of making that technology work better, or are we not? And that's what Smart Symposium City was all about, and there's a chance of saving money down the road. And I'll just say on September 19th, I did an Arts Community Committee meeting we had, and Counsel Thieson chaired it. We're now out of money and we'll be waiting till the new year. It's been spent. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel McClain. I'll just report very briefly on a couple of items that weren't mentioned. On the 18th, I had the opportunity to make a proclamation on behalf of Grand Prairie Big Brothers Big Sisters and proclaim the first-ever Big Brothers Big Sisters Day in Grand Prairie. I was joined by Counsel Tarrant there during a lunch event. And I also attended the LSM 50th Anniversary. And on Saturday, the 20th, I attended at Musquesee Peak Park for a walk in support of the development of a pregnancy care center. It was great to see a group of people in the community that are working towards developing a facility to give expectant mothers access to the resources that they may need to be able to support them. On the 21st, I was also at the kickoff for the AIDS Walk, again, back down at Musquesee Peak Park. And this morning, I had the opportunity and the pleasure of going out to county council for a county council meeting where they made a presentation to the City of Grand Prairie on our 100th anniversary. They gave us a very nice picture, which council members will see upstairs. But it was my first opportunity to attend a county council meeting and see their council in action. It was interesting to see and notice that their council chambers had much newer carpet than ours. Later on this afternoon, I had an opportunity to go to the Stars Hangar and make a presentation on behalf of council of the big novelty check as well as a small real check to Stars for the last $50,000 installment of the City of Grand Prairie's commitment of operational funding from the last budget term. And with that, I do want to thank the council members that covered for me and stepped up and took on some additional workload while I was gone during my family vacation. Certainly appreciate that. And I want to make sure that with our meeting tonight, that we give the last word to she who must be obeyed. Ms. Ferguson, anything you'd like to say at your last city council meeting for the City of Grand Prairie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say that I've really appreciated the challenges and opportunities that I've had with the city over the last 36 years that I've been with the city. And I really do think that the city is a great place to work. And I'd like to say it's my pleasure to have been able to work with the councils, the corporate leadership teams, and all of the city employees.
Thanks so much, Jeanette. For those of you, for those of you that may not know Jeanette, to get her to speak at a council meeting in and of itself is something. You weren't getting away without a hug, apparently. To get Ms. Ferguson to speak at a council meeting, doesn't happen regularly. So Jeanette, we certainly wanted to give you that opportunity to close those meetings. Thank you so much. Thank you for your dedication to the City of Grand Prairie. And with that, we'll close our meeting. Thank you.